Good morning, everybody. If I could ask you to please take your seats so we can get started. We have a, we have a full day, as they say, ahead of us. Good morning, and we are going to call to order the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners Workshop for January 31st, 2023. With that, can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Barnett. Commissioner Baxter.
Here.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Woodward.
Here.
All right. And we are going to have Commissioner Woodward lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you're able to, please rise.
Dear God, we are thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, good morning, everybody. Just before we get started, we are going to have a lunch break today, and we're going to be shooting for noon.
I think that's good.
It's always nice to have happy colleagues. In addition, normally, a workshop is really an opportunity for the board to have a discussion amongst ourselves. But we will, if time permits, take comment cards, but there is no guarantee that we may be able to get to everybody because we do have items that are time certain with us. So, we will do our best. And with that, are there any additions, deletions, or substitutions to the agenda?
I apologize. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. On page one, we did an add-on for our purchasing department overview, starting at 3:00. And then on page two, 3A2 has been deleted. That's our contracts list. There was nothing on it, so the clerk deleted it.
Okay.
That concludes our additions, deletions, and substitutions.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
We have, we have a motion by the Vice Mayor, a second by Commissioner Moreno, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. Great. We're moving on to our regular agenda. On item 3A1, A2 has been deleted. Do we have a motion on that item?
So moved.
We have a motion by the Vice Mayor, a second by Commissioner Moreno. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we now move on to item 3B1. Is there a...
Good morning. Sheri Brown, OFMP Director. I'm joined by Lisa Master, Budget Director, and David Bayhar from McCounty Attorney's So each of the Commission District's office has a budget for the Commissioner's salary, for their staff. Their staff includes three full-time positions, two county commission administrative assistants, one full-time secretary, and we also include about $12,000 for an intern. And then each district has $35,000 for operating expenses to cover travel, auto allowance, and any other office supplies and needs. So the personnel classifications, the county commission administrative assistant, it starts off as an administrative one for a new hire with a pay grade of 32. After a year of service, it could go to an admin assistant two, which is a pay grade 34. After two years of service, that position could go to a three, which is a pay grade 36. And then after four years of service, it could be promoted to a senior admin assistant, which is an E1. The county commission secretary follows kind of similar in that it starts off as a secretary one for a new hire, which is a pay grade 24. The secretary two is a 26. Secretary three, after two years of service, is a 28 pay grade. And then it's a senior secretary following four years of service at a pay grade 30. Those new hires start at the minimum of the salary range, and then they would move up with whatever raises that other county employees receive. So for 2023, the district budgets, the budgeted staff salaries are listed for each of the seven districts. Those budgets were based on the staff that was in place when the budget was prepared. So it could see some higher numbers for more senior staff that have been around a little bit longer. The second column is the current staff as of last week, what your staff looks like now for the annual salaries. Other personal services is just the benefits for those positions, plus the commission salaries and the interns, our operating budget, and then the total budgets for each of the six, seven districts. And for the current staff salaries, we did include, if there's any vacancies, we included them at the minimum of that vacant position. We did call around to a few other counties. Broward County has recently changed how they do their salaries. They do just a regular salary line of $266,000. The Commissioner is allowed three positions, and they could bring those three positions in at what salaries they would like, as long as they can live within the $266,000. Then they each get some operating dollars. The $266 does not include the benefits. It's handled separately. Orange County has two full-time staff positions. They have three different options, whether it's an admin assistant, executive secretary, or secretary, and how they can do that. But there's a maximum amount of about $146,000 that they're allowed for those two positions, and they have to stay within the pay range, their salary range. Hillsborough County does two full-time aides. Their starting salary is negotiated, but starts around $65,000 to $75,000 annually, and the staff receives across-the-board pay increases consistent with other county employees. The aide's maximum salary is $90,438. If someone maxes out at that and across-the-board is given, they would get it in lieu, they would get a lump sum in lieu of and across-the-board so that their salary always stays at that max. And that's kind of where we are, and we'll turn it over to you for questions.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. So when I started and I decided I wanted to bring on help, I thought when I took this job, right, we get to decide our have a pay range. When I looked it up, I thought that might be some of our discretion. So what I was, what I would like to see is that it is left up to the discretion of the Commissioner, where within the current range that we have, if you can go back to the personnel classification slide, so there's, you know, ranges already set. And I think it would be, if we can be trusted with a $6.7 billion budget to manage for this county, I don't think it's too much to ask that we also be trusted with deciding what our staff can make and their raises.
And I will say that the current policy, you know, is set by the resolution that was...
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess what I would like to know is if we were to set a total budget, like a cap, like we cannot spend any more than X amount of dollars, I would like to know where my fellow commissioners feel that number would be best, would best serve us all.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. If you, if you can explain to us the rationale for the range, so in that way, we can, just give us an update on that.
Right. The ranges said, it's something that we looked at. HR did our class and comp study recently. So they looked at all the paid grade ranges for various positions through, for all the positions throughout the county. And those ranges are kind of set based on that. And it was updated, you know, the resolution came to the board in 2017. So that's kind of where the pay ranges came from, was from the class and comp, and I believe some adjustments had been made at that time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. On the, like, I'm just looking at the senior administration, administrative assistant, E1 classification, what's the potential of someone reaching that, that maximum of that?
I...
I think it would have to be here for many years to reach that salary.
Right. Oh, I turned it off. Okay, it's not close enough. Yeah, I think it would have to be many years before they would reach that top salary range. I could check and see how many steps. It would depend on the annual increases we give every year, too.
And so, I know with term limits, you know, what's the potential of someone reaching that when you have new, new commissioners, term limits, and they bring in their new staff? Just curious.
It could be only eight years, so you wouldn't reach it in the eight years. Some commissioners have kept staff from the prior commissioner, so we do see some that have been here a little bit longer. So someone that might stay a little bit longer has the greater potential. But we moved the E1 to the four years because we felt like if you were in your second term, it would make it easier to place that person also if they needed to go to a different county department based on their skills and things like that.
Thank you. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
And for everyone's knowledge, how are they, how are we currently deciding at what pay scale people are hired in at?
It's hired at the minimum. They're the new hires. Right.
If I may follow up, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I guess what I'm asking, what is taken into consideration when deciding what, whether it's strictly years of service? Am I correct?
No, I mean, are you talking about the new hires?
Mm-hmm. Like, what determines their, yeah, classification that they're hired in at?
Yeah, so it is either the aide or the secretary. They start off as the one, the basic entry level, and it starts off at the minimum salary. And then every year for the first three steps, if you want to call it a step, to go from a one to a two to a two to a three, it's up to the Commissioner whether or not they would want to increase that person to the next level.
I, if you don't mind, Mayor?
No, go ahead.
There, I was reading our county policies, and it specifically says that regardless of education, regard, or experience, that they are only based on years of service. And I don't know of any other job that does that. Any place I've ever worked, if you have experience in what you're doing, that is all taken into account. And what, and one of the main reasons I'm asking for us to kind of take a, some say-so in our salary ranges that we pay our staff.
And just the difference is that your budget is by the resolution, and so that's the policy that has been set in the past, so we're following that policy at this point.
And on that note, if you don't mind, Mayor, just if it's okay?
Okay, please.
So my office, according to, if you go to the next slide, was budgeted at 251, and now I'm at 158.
Right.
So there's already a lot of room for that discretion.
Mm-hmm. The budget was based on the staff that worked for McKinley for eight years, and not knowing whether that staff would stay with you or leave, that's where the budget was based on.
And just years of service was the only factor?
Right.
Commissioner Bernard?
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Mayor. So for most of the other departments in the county, do pretty much everyone start at the lowest range? So if you're starting, there's no negotiation in regards to experience? Like, let's say you've had somebody who was a legislative aide in Tallahassee, or they, so, so no matter what, they cannot start, they have to start at the minimum. Is that correct?
I think it's different, it's different for each department. There may be some flexibility depending on the candidate. I can speak to my budget analyst. We start at the beginning, the minimum salary, and move them up because we have a similar go-from-a-budget-analyst-one, two, three type of a scenario. But there are other positions that may have some flexibility, and department heads have a flexibility, I think, of up to 10% above the minimum. And anything else would have to go to the county administrator.
So there are some departments that potentially can have
Right.
the ability to negotiate based on...
Correct.
Administrator Baker, you're recognized.
I think Sheri responded appropriately. We do allow department heads with justification to go up to 10%. Anything over and above that does come to me for approval, and it needs to make sure that there is some real justification for why we're doing it, because we just went through the Evergreen Study, if you will recall. The board was gracious enough to allow that. And then after we did the Evergreen Study, we still had some compression, and then we had to address the compression. So it exacerbates. But the BCC's ordinance was based on the direction of prior boards setting it. County staff does not set your salaries. The ordinance guides that.
Is there any minimum education requirements or previous experience required for a Commissioner to hire anybody into their office?
No, it's your discretion.
So there, some people could come in with degrees, and other people could come in with potentially not even finishing high school?
Correct. It's yours positions.
And some people could have had jobs, other industries, other people could be, this could be their first job?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know for me, I think that we bring different people, and I just would love to potentially see if, if there is a possibility of, you know, that 10% range, if it, if it's something that we can take a look at and see, because when you're bringing new staff that may have experience as maybe someone who's worked in a city, and if that, if the Commissioner wanted to have that flexibility to potentially bump it up to 5%, you know, I'd love for us to at least take a look at that. But, you know, I know I don't want us to have that flex, you know, when someone's coming in new, and they may want to bring someone that's the best and the brightest to assist them, if there's, if that's a possibility, I'd love for us to at least explore that. But whatever that current employees do have, then we can make that decision.
Do you think there should be a minimum criteria to award that?
Yeah, I think that, but that's something that we can take a look at. We don't, I don't think we need to decide this today, but I'd love for us to, for county administration to take a look at that and see if there's a possibility, because I, I don't think that, we're not bringing, you know, most of the people who are coming here with us have, they have experience, either legislative experience or college experience. You know, I have attorneys in my office, and so, you know, I'm not saying that we need to have free range, but I just think that if there's someone that merits that, that we can create a criteria, it could be the same standard, like, if it's a 5% or 10% that it gives us that opportunity, then, you know, I think we, if we can craft something with administration that gives us that opportunity.
All right. Thank you. I guess the only other thing I would add into that, one of the things, you know, coming in, when I came in and brought in new people, and one of my, one of my staff has, has master's degree, what I ended up doing to help compensate was I gave them the car allowances. And I gave, I split the car allowances amongst my staff, and so that's how I addressed it. All right. Commissioner Moreno, and then Commissioner Sacks, and we'll come back to you, Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you. If, since the rest of the directors do have a 10% discretion, and that does come with criteria, I would consider that as something that we should maybe take up here at the board, where we, but I do believe we, it is important that we have the guidelines that we have. And we have people, and I know one of my staffers has been there since 1994, so she is at, you know, the higher end of the pay range, but she's been here since 1994 and knows where all the bodies are buried, which, for me, that the experience of somebody that's being, that's been in the county that long, it makes, it makes our job as a Commissioner easier because, you know, we're not just calling the department head, we might be calling the person in road and bridge that really does the mowing of the medians. That's a reference to an earlier contract. But, you know, giving, giving the commissioners a little bit of flexibility, because yes, we, you know, we have, I have another person in my office who worked for another municipality, got paid a whole lot more than what she's getting paid here. If I had a little bit of flexibility to give her a little bit of an increase, I'd be happy to do that. I don't, but I do think that there needs to be a scale, because we do have other offices that have had people for a long time that have earned that salary. So I would be okay with a discretion of maybe 5% or 10%. I don't think it should be anything more than that. We, if the policy is already set for our department heads like that, maybe that would be something we could consider. Thank you.
Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized. Vice Mayor, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. The, I think it's good that we examine policies. I think that, as I've stated before, I'd like to have a little more background on why you want to change a policy. I can see that the purpose of this policy is legitimate, that we have, and that staff is recognized for many years of service. I will say that, that the staff that I have, Vivian Leiva and Janet Arguelles, been with the county for many, many years, and it's good that they are rewarded for length of service because it assists every Commissioner to have people in their staff. So in a way, the purpose has a legitimate consequence, which is to encourage new commissioners, such as myself, who've only been here two years, to, to have, to continue with staff so that you have that longevity, and, and you have, for your constituents, they know who to call. They know who to call, and it gives a continuity. In our state legislature, if that is a, an example, committee people stay on for years and years and years, years, and they really have a basis for, for how government processes work. So the purpose, I would imagine, that staff has, and that Ms. Baker has exercised, is to reward longevity in government service. Really, that's a pension, the idea of our pension. The longer you do government service, the greater your pension's going to be. So in a sense, those of us who are blessed to have staff who have been here many years, we have that benefit. And, and that encourages us to keep, and believe me, Ms. Baxter, and also to the two other new commissioners, it has been a blessing to have people who've been here for many years. It helps you out so much. If there are, I would like for staff to sit down with our new Commissioner and explained to all the new commissioners, to explain to them a little bit about, for example, they can give their, their, their car allowance and add to, to their staff salaries by spreading that out. There are some benefits that you can give them that help them, but also encourages them to stay. We want them to stay. So I am encouraged by the legit, the longevity of our staff here. It means that they've been treated well. We pay them well, and we want them to stay. I'm also encouraged by the fact that we have some flexibility. However, I am overly concerned with keeping it open. Otherwise, if one district has it, then we all need to do it. So we have to be careful so that it's fair and equal to all the districts and to all the staff. So that's what, that's what I would recommend, that, that our staff sit down with our three new commissioners, or anybody who wishes to, to get a little more access to the, the benefits that we can give our staff. They're, they're wonderful. They keep the engines running. We come in and out every couple of years as public servants, but hopefully the staff stays on. So that's my recommendation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Commissioner Baxter, and then we'll have Commissioner Bernard.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I disagree with, you know, just hiring people just, just based on longevity of just being a county employee. The person may, may be awful, and they can't even do the work, but you just want to reward just based on longevity. I just think that sometimes you, if, if there's a new Commissioner coming in, or it's another department where this person qualifies to be able to get that 5% or 10%, then you have that discretion. I, I just think sometimes you may bring the best, if you're a new Commissioner, there's someone that's great out there, that is great for your staff, and you want to hire that person, and giving that ability, that 5% or 10% to bring that best person versus keeping someone who's just awful, who can't even do the work, just because they've been here for a long time. Like, sometimes you need new blood. And I just think that giving, give, give that person that opportunity, if they have that flexibility, I think that's better than keeping someone that sucks.
Okay. All right. Well, it seems like between Commissioner Baxter, Commissioner Bernard, Commissioner Moreno, that you're looking to have staff bring it back a proposal to look at if we were to have a 5% or 10% flexibility on, I assume, on a new hire, and then what the criteria would be for granting such a deviation?
Correct.
Okay. Is any, anybody opposed to that?
I was still waiting. Yeah.
Well, I'm trying to, trying to get us to see if we, if we've got consensus up here right now to do, because that's what I'm hearing people are saying. So that, I just, I want to pull, check with the board. If we have consensus, then we can, we can, we can move forward. If not, we'll continue to have this discussion. Is there, is there consensus on that? Okay. So we have some consensus now. So Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
So just not trying to reinvent the wheel. Once again, we, they pointed out that Broward, which is a very similar county to our own, has a cap, and then they have three positions. And I would like to even just do away with the secretary title, because I don't think any of the secretaries actually only perform secretarial duties. So if we could have three admin, you know, at the 32 possibilities, instead of having two and then one from the lower level, I think that makes more sense. And again, it sounds like Broward is already doing that, the three positions. And then, you know, if my fellow commissioners would like some sort of range within that, I'm just saying, if we set a cap, I think we are responsible enough that we can choose if somebody's experienced, would do a good job. And I don't like the feeling that we aren't smart enough or educated enough to make good decisions. Our voters voted us here. make good decisions. Our voters voted us here, and I don't think they always want the same exact thing. I think new ideas, fresh ideas, are always welcomed. I've heard it repeatedly since being here, that everyone likes new ideas. And some people just like keeping things the way it has always been. I would just say, I think a living wage is not $45,000 a year, especially in Palm Beach County, in order to hire good people. That isn't, I mean, that just, it's so low. Nobody can live on $45,000 a year. And then the other one, at $56,000 a year, if you'll go back to the other slide. So we have $45,000 a year, is what, if I'm trying to get the best and brightest staff that we currently have to work with. And I, I do love the idea of a range, but even at 10%, I mean, they're still only at $50,000 rounding a year. That isn't something people can live on. And I doubt any of, anyone would agree that that's a living wage, or disagree, excuse me.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this, this issue came in regards to our classification for the 12th floor, when I first started, and I think we had the discussion in 2017. So I know that I brought it up in commissioners' comments, and the commission had allowed myself to work with administration to come up with something that was going to be able to be passed by the board. And so we worked really, really hard to get the numbers. This is, where we're at right now is something that we worked on really, really hard in 2017. What I would implore the commission is, we do have consensus on something moving forward, and if it's possible to still work with Commissioner Baxter and her office to at least work on something, and then let county administration eventually bring something to us. But at least we have a consensus on something that we can live with.
Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Thank you. Well, you know, this goes to all the new commissioners. So I think that what we need to do is if a staff, when you're reviewing what, what Commissioner Bernard just talked about in 2017, if we need to review all the commissioners who have, or any commissioner here, whether you're new or not, who have hired new people, starting in at $45,000, then, then we can move forward from there. But I think that a healthy review of any, of all the seven districts would be healthy. And certainly, certainly keep up with, with, with the way life is in our, in, in life, and trying to live in here in Palm Beach County. And certainly would encourage us to get new hires. So yes, let's look at all seven districts, and to see if we can, we can bump up, we have a little wiggle room, especially for the secretary one, new hire. I have somebody who I hired, making that amount of money. And so I think it's, it's, it's good to have a healthy review of all seven districts, to see if we can move forward on, on that secretary one, new hire. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and Commissioner Moreno, and then Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you, Mayor. The salaries that are on this list, are they comparable to what we offer new hires when they walk in the door for a merit position?
Yeah, the pay grade is for other positions also.
So if you raise that, you got to raise it across the county.
So then, if we change something on the 12th floor, we're actually not being fair to the people, the other folks. So again, I would, I would not support a, just handing us a budget. I'm, I'm in support of maybe a 5% discretionary, based on experience, but I don't believe we should be changing the policy if it's going to affect everyone else in the building. Because this is, at the end of the day, this is a budget increase, and that's taxpayer dollars.
And I will say that the titles are unique to the 12th floor only, so there, we're not hiring a commission secretary in departments and things like that, but the pay grades are used for other positions throughout the county.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. My question for this with the new hire, is it new hire specific to the 12th floor, or is this, if, if someone already works for the county, and we manage the, I don't know the right word, poach them from another part of the county, do they go into new hire, or do they get years of service for being a part of the county before that?
They could. If you take someone from another department, under the merit rules, if it's more than two pay grade increases, they will either go to the minimum salary of the new position, or if they would go, is it?
It's three pay grades.
Three pay grades?
Yeah, so if, if they, it's 3% per pay grade, more than three pay grades, it's 10%, or to the minimum of the new pay grade, whichever is more.
Their pay grade would be with whatever position they were in with the county already, and then that would be determined. Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I am, I guess I just wanted to ask the fellow commissioners kind of how they feel. I do know that Commissioner Barnett, the potential of hiring new people kind of stuck out to me, when offering people a job or a position, and when I told them the starting pay, their willingness to take the job. Because a legislative aide is very, very important for us to get to do what we need to do. And it is a skilled job that can be acquired even outside the county. And I might just want to remind my fellow commissioners that are going to be looking at hiring new staff, that I've gone through these struggles that maybe you haven't yet. And the way I'm proposing it, I don't think to even match Broward is out of hand. It seems to have worked well for them. And to see what your thoughts are, you know, please let me know how you feel about, you know, potential of bringing people in.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. So coming back, I think we had, so we have consensus, it appears, to have a further discussion, or have staff come back, with the idea of having flexibility on bringing somebody in with that, offering the same flexibility that the directors, department directors have in, with their new hires, and looking to have you all bring that back. I'm not hearing, at this point, about a wholesale redoing of, of the program, but, you know, if the board, if that's the board's wishes, we can give that direction. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we give that direction without objection, or are we looking for general consensus on this?
I, I think in something like this, you want to have consensus from the board?
I guess.
Or support from the board to do that? And I'm not hearing that.
I'm not hearing anything. I guess is why I'm asking. So could we ask, you know, without objection, do you object to changing it to allow us the discretion within the current range?
I do.
To make those decisions? And then where you want to go from here?
I, I, I was supportive of allowing the flexibility that we talked about earlier. I'm not supportive of wholesale change to how we do this.
Would you be supportive of having three admin assistants, instead of two admin assistants and one secretary?
I would not.
Then the only thing I would really ask is that if there's something already budgeted for, I mean, maybe allow the commissioner coming in to at least work within the budget that has been budgeted for.
All right, all right. Hearing nothing else? Okay.
Just want to, Ms. Baker, do you have directions in regards to, I just wanted to throw you in?
Notice I was being extremely quiet on this end. I, I heard the board, and I would be coming back to you saying, you know, a maximum of 10%. So that gives the board your discretion on hiring in those people at the first step. The clerical persons, the secretary one, as well as the administrated, administration assistant.
And the criteria. That would, would take to do that.
Now, I'm going to need direction from this board, clear direction, on criteria, because I know what my staff does.
So I, I think we should start with that?
Okay.
Of what the criteria your staff is utilizing, and then bring that back to us, and, and we can, we can then work with that. Does that, does that seem fair? Okay. Everybody's good with that? Okay.
We will work to pull that together, and then I will meet with Commissioner Baxter, because she, this was, and all of you. I'll, I'll start with Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you.
And then I will meet with each of you, and then we'll pull something together and bring it back to the board for your consideration.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. And now, let's hear from Department of Housing and Economic Development Programs and Activities.
Do you have a pin?
Thank you, thank you. We got a couple cards? I could have had, I was trying to bring it in for landing a lot faster, though.
Good morning, Ms. Miller, or Mrs. Miller.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. It's good to see you. So as the mayor mentioned this morning, what we'll be doing is make a presentation to the board, consistent with Administrator Baker, Administrator Baker's plan. Her goal is to highlight several departments, their functions, duties, and responsibilities. And so she has asked Housing and Economic Development to be the first one to start. So sorry to Parks, because Parks mantra is it starts in Parks. So she believes apparently it starts in Housing. So this morning, so this morning, what we have is, it takes a village, as you all know, to pull off Housing and Economic Development, and deliver services to the county. So at the table this morning, we have, of course, Jonathan Brown. He leads the Housing and Economic Development Department, and there are two components. You have the housing component, and also the economic development component. Then we have Sherri Howard. Sherri Howard is the Deputy Director of Housing and Economic Development. And in the audience, we have members of the leadership team, and I would ask them to stand, to be recognized. They have been doing an awesome job over the last several years, and before, in delivering programs to Palm Beach County, and I really, really appreciate their work, and, and thank them. Now, we also have David Brand. Boardy have been approving several housing revenue bonds, and this is led, the Housing Finance Authority is led by David Brand. David is the Executive Director, and he will go over the governance, and also what they do, and how it works. Then we have our Westgate Belfer area CRA executive, this is Elise Michelle, and you are familiar with Elise. He runs the Westgate Belfer CRA area. We have a map to show you the boundaries, and that is the only CRA that we have in Palm Beach County. Then we have Cindy, Cindy Lacrosse Blom. She's the Executive Director of the Community Land Trust, that was formed by Palm Beach County, and she is our partner. So we will go into that as well. And just as a plug for Commissioner Barnett, he was fortunate enough to do a groundbreaking at one of the Davis Landing that you have actually funded over the last several months, that is now in the ground and, and coming. And also Commissioner Bernard was there as well. So we can see, you know, the projects that are coming to fruition. So basically, what we are presenting today is just who we are, and what we do. So we're going to start with Jonathan Brown.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. So Jonathan Brown, Doris shared a little bit with you about the agenda today, so I'll move it forward. From the Department of Housing and Economic Development's perspective, some of our functions include managing the federal, state, and, and local funding that we have, we receive here in the county. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, but we deal with dollars that come in from housing, economic development, as well as community development. Our mission statement, simple one, changing lives and transforming neighborhoods into balanced communities. And we say that because we not only deal with housing, we deal with economic development, but also community development. And so that is part of our mission. And so some of the programs that we administer, and, you know, oftentimes we speak a lot in acronyms, but from the federal perspective, it's our CDBG program, which, in my opinion, is probably the most flexible program. Home, ESG, and NSP. NSP, we'll talk about a little bit later, but it is a stimulus program that was awarded to the county back in 2008. We also, from the state level, we have our SHIP program. And then the local programs that we administer, the funding sources includes the Impact Fee Assistance, Workforce Housing, the Purchase Assistance portion of Workforce Housing, and then the Housing Initiatives Fund, which is the ad valorem that is committed and given to HED each year. So a little bit about the Community Development Block Grant Program. Our CDBG program is an annual allocation, it's a formula grant that we receive from HUD. Right now, it's approximately $7.5 million. It serves low, moderate income families up to 80% of the area median income. And we serve the unincorporated areas of Palm Beach County, as well as 31 municipalities. I, I share that, and you'll see underneath there, some of the entitlement cities, or some cities that receive their own allocation, that we typically do not provide CDBG funds within. Those cities are listed there. The county allocates CDBG funds to public service activities that are countywide. Also, we work with county departments for capital projects. And then there are 10 municipalities that have CDBG target areas, that we provide a formula allocation to. That formula allocation is consistent with how HUD allocates dollars to us. We use the same methodology when we recommend an allocation to those cities. Eligible activities include infrastructure, public facilities, housing. Now, housing, one caveat, when using CDBG, CDBG cannot be used for new construction. So you typically will not see CDBG used in projects that, that's new construction related for housing. Our public service activities, and you can see some of the agencies that we assist, based on the HUD requirements, no more than 50%, 15% of your CDBG allocation can be used toward public services. The largest portion of our CDBG funds for public services is used within our homeless assistance centers, homeless assessment centers. And then there is the program administration for CDBG, no more than 20%. The Home Program, again, is another formula allocation grant that we receive from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. This program, too, limits the area median income of the households that we can assist, up to 80% for a household of four, that's roughly $76,000, $73,600. Some of the eligible activities, you can see here, new construction, acquisition rehab, home buyer financing, et cetera. The Emergency Solutions Grant, again, is another formula grant that we receive from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. This program, we really, we oversee the compliance portion from a HUD perspective, but it's the Community Services Department that actually implements the activities, and works with the nonprofit agencies that are providing and bringing forth the transitional housing, essential services, rapid rehousing, and the shelter program. Neighborhood stabilization, I mentioned to you a little while ago. This is a program, again, awarded to the county back in 2008 under the Housing and Economic Recovery Act. This program focuses on actions related to vacant, foreclosed, and abandoned properties. And again, this program was a little bit different than your typical HUD programs, because it allows us to go up to a because it allows us to go up to 120% of the area median income, which for a family of four, is $110,400. Eligible activities include the acquisition of foreclosed properties, redevelopment of vacant properties, homebuyer financing and demolition. One of the larger acquisitions in this was the original Lewis Center, funding from, using NSP. Our SHIP program, which you hear oftentimes about with regards to what we look to do with that. This program has, when it's funded, fully funded, we are, we're very effective with the program. Over the last five years, you're basically about $20 million in the program, $21 million. This program has been defunded over some years, and so you'll see, you know, the average right now, at least for this year, is about 10.3, but over the five-year period, we haven't really been getting as much as we should have been receiving. This program, again, allows us to target those who are AMI up to 140%, which is, again, $128,000 for a family of four. And then you can see the eligible activities under this program. When we talk about uses of funds, one of the things that you'll recognize is that these programs, while they allow for the creation of new units, we focus a lot of assistance with regards to preservation of existing housing units. And then our workforce housing development, workforce housing purchase assistance program. This here is the program that, when we receive the in-lu fees from developers, the Board of County Commissioners, you all have set aside those dollars to be used for down payment assistance. So we work with those buyers in terms of orientations, making sure they understand how the program works, working with them in terms of getting qualified with lenders to prepare them for the purchase of those units. And for this particular program, you can see what the income requirements are, which are different than with the state or federal funds. This program, the AMI starts at 60%, and it goes up to 140%. And we work this program in coordination with planning, zoning, and building. Impact Fee Assistance Program, program approved back in 2009, roughly. This program, we use 50% of the interest earned, not the impact fees themselves, but the interest earnings to, from specific areas, to provide assistance to developers who want to create new housing throughout the county. Roughly about a $1.3 million budget. This program, again, allows us to go up to 140% of the area median income, $128,000 for a family of four. And funding is set aside in specific geographic zones. We also work with our Facilities Department, specifically the Property and Real Estate Division. Whenever the county comes into possession of property that's suitable for affordable housing, we work with, we work with FDO, we work with PRIM, to determine if we, as the county, are looking to build on those infill lots, because for the most part, they infill lots, or if we would work with some of our partners where the county would donate lots. And you can see, whether it's been Habitat, the Community Land Trust, or Riviera Beach CDC, a lot of the lots, we donate to those nonprofits to produce new affordable housing in Palm Beach County. Also, as part of the programs, and, you know, we started talking about this a few weeks ago, there are rigorous HUD and state monitoring requirements. And so you will see, oftentimes, as we're working with developers, we're really laying in on some of those requirements, because if those developers or those projects don't meet the monitoring requirements, then we, as the county, fail. So we work hard with those developers, whether it's multifamily projects, or even our single-family projects, to ensure that they're meeting all state, and federal, and local requirements when it relates to monitoring. I mentioned earlier, as part of what we do also, is capital projects in our Capital Improvement Program, and you'll see some of the projects that we'll do within capital, whether they are, you know, facilities, whether they're parks, whether they're roads. We provide dollars to agencies, and those agencies as well must meet the standard, the state requirements or the federal requirements, when it comes to the uses of those dollars. Some of those requirements are pretty challenging for smaller municipalities, but we work with them to make sure they remain compliant. And then these are just a few photos of projects that we've assisted with, some of our partners. While we, as the county, provide the dollars, we're not the developers, we're not the builders. We work with those specific developers and builders, mostly through a competitive process, and they're providing us the product, and they're providing us the product in the areas that they have identified makes sense for their business model. And here are some of also our community development projects. Now, one of the things that, you know, I do want to make sure you're aware of, is that when it comes to HUD funds, and every year, you'll see us come back to the board with some sort of document. We came back in 2020, 2021 with our five-year consolidated plan. HUD requires that we put together a five-year plan, global plan, on how we anticipate using some of the funds that they are providing, or all of the funds that they are providing. And so that is captured within our five-year consolidated plan. Now, and then, in addition to the five-year plan, there are annual action plans, and so the annual action plans take into consideration public comment about strategies and about dollars in specific strategies that we will bring back to the commission, so the commission can provide guidance. Typically, with the annual action plan, you're talking about your CDBG, your Home, and your ESG. We try to bring a draft item to you typically around April or May of every year, and then we'll bring that final action plan back to you with public comment typically around July of every year. And then at the end of each year, every December, we're required to provide a CAPR, a Consolidated Annual Performance Report, to HUD. And again, when we take a look at our jurisdictions, our jurisdictions cover unincorporated, and it covers 31 municipalities. Those that are excluded are here, and that's because, again, they meet the qualifications for their own CDBG or HUD-funded projects. And then again, some other planning activities, which includes our local housing assistance plan. For the SHIP funds, we come back to you on an annual basis as well. We take in the recommendations from the community and other agencies on the use of the SHIP funds, and that's what this is. One of the groups that we typically work hand-in-hand with is our Commission on Affordable Housing. This particular advisory board is established by the Board of County Commissioners, but it is a requirement if we want to receive state funds. And so we're working, and we'll be back to you with some recommendations from the Commission on Affordable Housing next week. And now we'll have Sherri talk a little bit about our economic development programs.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. A little bit about our economic development programs. We also receive our funding from various sources, whether it's federal, local, or some projects that are approved by the board that are privately financed. Our federal programs are all competitive awards. We don't have any formula allocations, so we do apply for these competitively nationwide. Local, with our EDIs, those are approved by the board on a case-by-case basis, and the economic development partners are funded either through CDBG, brought to you in the annual action plan that Jonathan just talked about, or during our budget process. Go ahead and go to the next one. So the first one is our Section 108 loan program. This is gap financing for business projects. We fund up to 40% of the project. They have certain requirements that are required by HUD. There has to be an owner equity of 10% in the project, and we were just awarded last year $14 million. Our total allocation was $45.9 million, including that. We've made 71 loans, of which 35 of those have already been repaid in full. We also have our intermediary relending program, and this is a loan that we specifically applied for, for our rural areas, in the areas of Pahokee, South Bay, Belgrade, Canal Point, some of our unincorporated areas. Basically, you can use these for any business activity. We also have reporting requirements to USDA for that. We just got an additional $1.1 million to add to our $1.4 million that we have already allocated towards loans. This is the brownfield redevelopment act. This is not funding, but this is an act that was adopted by the state, and in order to support those initiatives of reducing public health and environmental hazards on commercial and industrial sites that are abandoned or underused and have contaminants, we do three things within our office. The first thing that we do is that we support assessment of brownfield sites. We work in partnership with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council in order to apply for grants, so that we can support these cleanup activities. Secondly, we also assist developers that want to designate a site as a brownfield site. And one of the reasons that developers like to do this is because they get the voluntary tax cleanups from the state. They can get a maximum of up to $500,000, depending on their costs, back from the state. So in order to do that, they have to go through the formal designation, which they do through the county. Also, we have our brownfield revolving loan fund. This is a fund that we have that has a low-interest, favorable term loan in order for cleanup. So we do this in order to support the full process of each step, and helps to remove contaminants, whether they're hazardous substances, their petroleum, their, you know, other substances like fuel tanks and things of that nature. We also apply in partnerships typically with other organizations or with municipalities for economic development administration grants. These have gotten even more highly competitive over the last few years, as you have to show a significant regional impact, so not even just within the county, but even further than that. Probably some of the, one example that I can provide you is we partnered with Lake Worth Beach. We were awarded $1.4 million in order to help with infrastructure projects on their business industrial sites. We also have our economic development incentive grants that we do. This is something that we work in close partnership with the Business Development Board when they bring us projects. For target industries such as logistics, manufacturing, aviation, and aerospace, the same types of businesses that Ed Chase was talking to about yesterday. The most recent project that we did was FINFRAK, and we'll talk about that a little bit. Also, we do economic development monitoring. It depends on the funding source of which the project comes from. HUD has specific monitoring regulations we must follow. USDA does, EPA does, and if we do something through the county, like the EDIs, like the incentive grants, the board actually in 2019 approved exactly what we do as far as monitoring for those. And we do annual site visits. We also have our industrial development revenue bonds. Now, these, this is not money that is obligated by the county. This is purely privately financed, but according to the IRS code, the local government has to approve these when they come through the process. It doesn't have to be our local government, but typically, people do come through the county when it's a county project. We think, we work in close partnership with our county attorney's office on these projects, and there are certain statutes we have to follow. But the important thing about this is, in the last five years, the county has approved $5 billion, or $3 billion in revenue bonds, and we use these as economic indicators to measure economic growth within the county. We also have our economic development partners. We talked about our Business Development Board, that's a very important partner in marketing and recruitment for the county. But you'll see these other partnerships that we have for the TDS Center, CEO, BBIC, Florida Atlantic Research Park, FAU Tech Runway, Film and Television Commission. These are for our startup, our micro, and our small business support, and so we think these are very important, as we know, over 90% of all businesses in the county are small businesses. And then we have our contract that we manage through the Film and TV Commission for the Student Showcase. It was interesting with some of our DEO data that we saw, although film is not a high job generator in the county, it was one of the highest percentage-wise over the last year, so that's kind of interesting, I thought, just throw that in there. So some of our projects, some of our examples, Kiss Kitchens, this is something that's going through some of its final processes. We partnered very closely with the Town of Lake Park and their CRA, who gave a $1 million grant towards this project. It's going to have three components in it. Oceanic Coffee, if you've heard of them, they're actually going to grind their coffee there, and they'll have a small shop. Well, there's a Florida canning that will also be for very small businesses that maybe cannot afford to have their own, you know, building or whatever, and they'll be able to come in and can, whether it's, you know, apple juice or whatever it is, and they'll be able to rent the space. And then also the Kiss Kitchen, which will be the commercial space, places for food trucks to come in, or somebody to have a small pie shop, or whatever it is. So these are, this is another support of small businesses that we look to see. Then we have the One North Lake Project. This is an interesting project, because it is in an opportunity zone. This is a project, a mixed-use project, that we were working on for a long time in the city of Pahokee. There was one missing component to it, and we filled that gap when the opportunity zones came along, and an opportunity zone fund came in to support the project. So now, because it's in an opportunity zone, it has risen to the top of that. We're working very closely with FHA and the housing component. It's gone to the top of their list, because it's in an opportunity zone. The county supplied a grant to help with some of the infrastructure, and also, we have a 108 loan in the, in the commercial portion. And then this is FINFRAK that I talked about earlier, very important project in the Glades. I think everybody knows about it, 200 jobs. We work also very closely with Career Source, who's been helping to fulfill those jobs. This was a cash incentive of $1.9 million from the county, and an ad valorem tax exemption of $400,000. We also have our brownfield projects that I talked about briefly. The first two projects, we actually helped with site designation. One is a mixed-use project, one is a hospital, and then Northwood Square, which is in West Palm Beach, and we actually provided them with a low-interest loan. So these are just examples of some of those. This is an example of our industrial revenue bond. There are all kinds of projects that can be schools, they can be hospitals, they can be, for instance, this is a senior facility, but again, capital investment of $69 million, 100 new administrative jobs. So that's important. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dorit Miller. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherri and Jonathan. Great job. So do you have any questions, or continue rolling along? Continue rolling? Okay, good. Thank you. So now...
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Sacks has a question.
Thank you very much. Before we get too far into the weeds on this issue, the brownfields is something that is of interest to me, because of the areas in our county that could qualify. And I know there's tremendous incentives by the state for us to clean up some of these areas, and then to give incentives to developers. Have we identified any brownfields in Palm Beach County up to now that could be used for, you know, for affordable housing and incentives to developers?
Typically, the process is a developer, for instance, one of the first projects was an example. The Town of Palm Beach actually owned that site, and they were selling it to a developer. So they come to us because they want to take advantage of the voluntary tax credit. So, you know, it's on private lands, and then what happens is, when the county designates a site, we send it to the state, and they actually map those sites and keep those on the map, you know, put those on the map. We also contact Environmental Resources Management, so they're aware of those, and Planning, Zoning, and Building, I also know participates in some of those things. But it's typically from the private sector that it comes to us.
May I have a follow-up, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Do we have, can we identify, because I know there are so...
Is there a map?
Is there a map?
Of the brownfields?
Well, they're typically has to be in... A little ways from my left ear. Is there a map of the brownfields in the county? Because, because I think this is something that, instead of waiting for a developer to tell us, I think we can identify some of these areas, that, especially now that businesses have failed, and there's a lot of empty, not just warehouses, but big box stores. Can we identify some of these for ourselves?
Well, the ones that we designated are mapped by the state. There has to be an assessment, and...
I understand that, but...
Commissioner, I think Commissioner Marino has some comments on that.
Oh, very good. I'm glad this is a workshop, too. Good. Let's look into this.
Well, something that comes up at Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council a lot are the brownfield areas, and the remediation, and the partnerships. So I think what might help answer that question is, we can check with Treasure Coast to see what's on their books, and then in the same process, if there is anything out there privately-owned, we're looking for you. But we can check with Treasure Coast for a complete listing. I don't know how complete it is, but I do know that they have a jump on this, so we can check with them.
I wonder if someone from staff could provide that to all of us. I know that there are many businesses right now, even in my district, that are going out of business, and I would like to be able to jump on this. Session is coming up in March, so if we could get, we could identify those areas in our county on this map, and then let us know, and we can all look in our own districts for this type of brownfield designation, then send it up to the state, and let's get the money rolling down south.
We'd be happy to do so, Mayor, and DHS in the department, they have a great research team, so we'll do the work, and we will get back with you.
Sorry, I didn't hear you, Dorit. Who does the, who does the work?
Our housing staff. We do have staff available to do research, so we'll definitely do the research and get some answers to you in very short order.
Love to see that map. And then we can all plug in our areas. I know of areas right in my district that are going under. I know of areas right in my district that are going under, and I'd love to be able to get on that pretty soon before, before session starts.
We'll get on it.
You're welcome.
And just as a comment as well, in all the conversation happening in the state regarding housing, what we have seen is that developing brownfield areas has become very, very popular because of the scarcity of land, so it is being discussed all over the state.
Thank you. Commissioner Wood, what do you recognize?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the brownfield. I had two pages of questions about that, but you've answered most of them. My last question would be, do, do we, I know that you say that the private landowner needs to ask for this, but are we educating applicants when they come in to maybe ask for this or, or look and see if they would qualify for a brownfield? And if not, is that something we can maybe add to the discussion? Just because these are, these are dollars kind of left on the table that don't have to come out of Palm Beach County, and if we could bring more of that back here, I think it would be helpful.
We would certainly look into that and also collaborate with our planning department as well. Patrick.
Great.
And Ms. Baker, Ms. Baker, she has meetings almost every other day, drag into meeting about housing and development, so we will certainly come up with a promotional plan.
And we actually have in the past and will continue to work with the development community regarding brownfields. This board has approved a number of brownfields that have come through the process, so we will continue. And Dorit has volunteered staff to do the research on some of this stuff. So we'll get a map of where the brownfields exist and identify the ones that we've actually done, worked with developers to put housing on, it, and we'll do the best we can on identifying the future because they are private property and you don't know what's going on there.
Thank you.
We'll depend on the developer to continue to work with us on it.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to, Jonathan, you had mentioned with CDBG, is HUD making any changes to CDBG right now, or pretty much there is a status quo?
From what I understand, it's status quo. I'm not aware of any changes that are coming through.
Okay, thank you very much. Sheri, I know the opportunities, opportunity zones started out very slow. How do you see the community embracing the opportunity zones, or are there still potential to get more credit through the opportunity zones?
I think there will be an opportunity. There has been bills filed in the Congress to expand those opportunity zones and to maybe extend. You know, there were some areas that our Board of County Commissioners recommended to the state that were not, you know, designated as, and I think that's happened in many areas in the nation. So there, there was some legislation we were following last year and will continue to follow this year to expand it into other areas that would be eligible and also to maybe extend that time. It came rather quickly, you know, as far as understanding it, and I think that everybody's looking to capitalize on those opportunities. And it's important to our federal agencies. They're moving any projects, whether it's, you know, any federal agencies, EPA, USDA, EDA, they're moving those to the top of the list when they come through for grant opportunities. So it still seems to be important from a federal side.
And one follow-up, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
I think that there are a couple, maybe one or two commissioners, commissioned districts that I don't think that they had, the state had accepted, so if there are other opportunities in other commissioners' districts or myself, plead us, please let us know so in that way. If they can be added, then that'd be the right time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Two comments or some, and some follow-up. Could you really give us a better understanding or the criteria of what makes up an opportunity zone?
I'm trying to remember the year when we came to the board, but we brought opportunity zone, they provide-
2019, I think.
Yeah, 2019.
2019.
There was an opportunity for distressed areas, they were in distressed areas, to be provided an opportunity for additional investment that would help to benefit the investor into these distressed areas. And one of the things that had to happen is you had to establish an opportunity zone fund, and that was through private financing. It wasn't through the county or anything like that. So there was a number of zones, maybe 23 or so, that we provided to the state. I think about half of those were accepted, but there was other zones that were included that weren't provided to the state, that the state provided to the Treasury. So it's actually, it, it's purpose is to provide an investor with opportunities and advantages when, when investing in a distressed area.
Thank you. Also, okay, where did my question go? These, since we're, since we're sort of stopped here and going back on a couple of things, the Section 108 loans, it says the range, low to moderate income, what is that range, do you know?
So 51%, up to 51% of the jobs have to be for low to moderate income levels. I'm trying to remember the exact numbers.
No, and you use the same methodology for CDBG in terms of household size and maximum income. So for a household size of four, you're talking about 73,600.
Okay, and so that's the salary range of the people that the new jobs are supposed to be for?
At the time of hire, they have to be in the low to moderate income range. It's to help promote upward economic mobility.
Okay, thank you. And I think, for the moment, that's, I know, thank you.
Right, thank you. It looks like we have no lights, and please continue.
Okay, thank you. And if I may make a point regarding Commissioner Bernard's comment about CDBG, if there are any potential changes, just reminded that in conjunction with our NICO legislative session, we always seek an audience with the, the HUD Secretary. We are in the process of doing that as well. So if you have any ideas as to some changes that you would like to recommend, we'll also entertain that, and we'll let you know when the meeting is actually scheduled. So moving right along, we now have Housing Finance Authority, David Brand, who's the executive director.
Thank you, Dorit. Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker. The Housing Finance Authority of Palm Beach County is a dependent special district. I just wanted to digress just for a moment and say that I've been the director of the authority since 2009, but prior to that, I was in the public finance field, and I eventually specialized in the issuance of bonds by Housing Finance Authority. So I've been around this activity since the late 1970s. And with that, I wanted to point out just a basic difference between a public housing authority and a housing finance authority. In the mid-1970s, up to that point, the primary focus of the federal government for affordable housing was through public housing authorities. Public housing authorities owned and operated affordable housing facilities, and the other big major HUD program prior to that, prior to the mid-'70s, was the FHA and VA Mortgage Insurance Program. But I think Congress's intent was to push some of the affordable funding activities for housing down to the state and local level, and the way they chose to do this is through the Internal Revenue Code. So starting in the mid-1970s, local governments were allowed to use tax-exempt revenue bonds for the purpose of financing not only affordable housing, but a number of other activities, including industrial development, health facilities, and a number of other things. And so in 1979, the Florida Legislature adopted what was called the Housing Finance Authority Law, which we deem, or we call the Act, it's Chapter 159.4. And the purpose of that was to alleviate the shortage of affordable housing through the raising of capital for those activities. When the board was, or when the Housing Finance Authority was created here, basically the, the ordinance or the code for, the HFA, follows the state act almost verbatim. One of those requirements is that the board members be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners for four-year terms. They're staggered. There are certain requirements for board members. They're generally, they have to have backgrounds in commerce, finance, or advocacy, excuse me, for affordable housing. The code also requires that, that the Board of County Commissioners approve the issuance of bonds by the Housing Finance Authority. The purpose of these housing revenue bonds are primarily for two things. One is for a mortgage program for first-time homebuyers, and obviously there are income and house price limits for those. And the other major activity is to finance affordable rental housing projects. With that, because they are private activity bonds, the taxing power of the county, the state, even the Housing Finance Authority itself is not pledged to repayment of those bonds. It's strictly the assets that are acquired with the proceeds of those bond issues that are used to pay them off. The authority doesn't receive any direct federal, state, or local funding. Again, the, the benefit that we can pass on to both first-time homebuyers and affordable housing developers is either the lower interest cost of doing tax-exempt financing, or because there's a specific tie between tax-exempt bonds and other, and other federal subsidy, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. Generally, eligible persons under the Act are defined as households earning up to 150% of area median income. There is a specific exemption, exemption to that where the authority can finance a multifamily bond project where a portion of the units can be available at market rates and without income limitations to the tenants. Next slide, please. Okay, we'll talk real quick about the single-family homeownership program. Again, the, I think the intent of Congress and certainly of our state legislature was that we involve private industry in our programs, therefore, we don't have a staff to originate loans. We structure a program, we hire the professionals necessary to get the program put together. But the, in, in this case, local lending institutions are the entities that originate loans on our behalf. For about the first 35 years of the existence of the authority, we were issuing tax-exempt bonds to finance that. Since the Great Recession and generally much lower market interest rates, we've switched over to basically a market taxable program. So for example, today, the current rate on our 30-year fixed-rate mortgage is 6.25%. With an FHA loan, a borrower can finance up to 97% of the purchase price. Our minimum FICO score is 640, which is, you know, generally comparable to the, the general mortgage market, but the additional thing that the authority provides is down payment and closing cost assistance. Currently, that amount is up to $10,000. It's repayable if the home is no longer used as a principal residence, if they sell the home, or at the end of 30 years, if they stay in it as a principal residence for the full term. A second program that's, that's offered under the code is what's called a mortgage credit certificate, and that allows a recipient of the certificate to deduct up to $2,000 a year from their federal income tax return. Both of these programs are for first-time homebuyers with incomes up to 140% of area median income, which is currently 135,450, and a home price limit of 90%, 90% of the average sales price, which is 32,195. Now, some of these numbers may be a little different than, than what Jonathan and, and Housing and Economic Development may use. These are established by the Treasury, they're adjusted annually. How the Treasury comes up with their number, it is based on market home sales prices, but if you look at 382,195, most of us, I think, would say that's 90% of our current sales prices here in Palm Beach County. Just quickly, the loan and mortgage, loan and MCC origination over the past 10 years, under the single-family program, we've done 403 homes. You see the, the average sales price and average income of the buyers, the same thing on the mortgage credit certificate program. I think the main distinction between the average house prices and the average incomes, the differential, is the fact that the MCC program had a greater demand in the, you know, six, seven, eight years ago, and the activity under that program tapered off with the rise in prices of homes. And again, I think that's the primary difference between the two. Next slide, please. Just a quick overview of the multifamily housing revenue bond program. For those board members who have been around sometime, you know that we come before you with requests for you to approve the issuance of bonds. Basically, what can be financed is either new construction or acquisition with substantial rehabilitation of multifamily rental projects for households with incomes up to 60% of area median income. Now, there are some exceptions to this, as, as I mentioned. If the project qualifies for the low-income housing tax credit, a portion of the project can be offered at market rents without income limitations. The issuance of bonds by the Housing Finance Authority requires what's called a private activity bond allocation. That's an amount that's made available each year. It's based on the population of Palm Beach County relative to the state. For 2023, that amount is $87 million approximately. That will give us an opportunity to finance a number of projects this year that are in our pipeline, which I'll, I'll discuss in a minute as well. Under project funding over the past 10 years, we've done six new construction projects that have built 533 units and required the issuance of about 60 million in bonds, and leveraged 45 million of housing tax credits and 24 million of GAAP financing. Most of that has come from the Florida Housing Finance Corporation sale program, but in the last 24 months, we've seen a tremendous determination by Palm Beach County to utilize some of its ARPA funding and other program revenues to assist with that very high cost of new construction. We've done 11 acquisition rehab projects with almost 2,000 units, therefore, were preserved and will be affordable housing for a minimum of 15 years, but in the last, in, since 2022, we've been insisting with the recommendation of, of county administration that those units be set aside for a, a minimum term of 30 years. I think with that, we currently have bond issuance for 25 projects with, with almost 3,800 units that are still under income restrictions and will be for a, a number of years. Finally, last slide, challenges. You know, we've certainly seen what's, the, the effect of the rapid rise in home prices since COVID, and as well as the Federal Reserve's attempt, starting in the spring of last year, to raise interest rates to attempt to tame inflation. And so what we've seen is a tremendous falloff in activity under our homeownership program, and I think we'll continue to see this until either rates stabilize or, you know, hopefully with the, the GEO issue of, that the voters approved last November, we'll see an increase in supply of, of lower-cost affordable housing. On the multifamily- On the multifamily side, we have a pipeline of four new construction projects totaling 300 units. Obviously, that means some of these projects are very small. They do have funding from the county as well as the sale program through the state of Florida. And we also have three acquisition rehab projects of 534 units, and we expect all these to close within the next 18 to 24 months. The gap now for new construction is probably the funding necessary to do a new construction project. The gap is closer to $65,000 to $70,000 per unit these days. Now, there is obviously a number of factors that are, you know, that go into that equation. Cost of land, construction type, you know, the unit mix, whether they're, you know, ones and twos, studio units versus, you know, three- and four-bedroom units. And then whether, as the state sometimes requires a portion of their funding for below, a very low-income set-asides. And I think the county does that as well sometimes when they provide additional funding. So, that gap can, it can range a little bit, but that's the kind of number that we're seeing these days. And hopefully, a portion of that will be addressed with the proceeds of the GO as well. With that.
All right, I have a couple of questions. You said, if I heard you correctly, did you say that they can use this for industrial projects?
Oh, no, no, no. What I meant was when Congress was approving legislation, they covered a broad variety of things. And they created basically industrial revenue bonds for manufacturing, health facilities, and a number of other activities along with housing.
Okay, just to clarify that. Do you know what the portion is required for the low-income tax credit projects? What proportion number of units have to be in the project?
Okay. For the issuance of bonds, the developer has to make an election, either 20% at 50% of AMI, or 40% at 60% of AMI. For the housing tax credit, only units at 60% of AMI qualify for a housing tax credit. So, if a developer wants to get the housing tax credit for 100% of the units, you have to have 100% set aside. Now, the 60% of AMI, you can average, you can have as high an income as 80% of AMI as long as the average of all tenants is 60% of AMI or less.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? Okay.
Okay, thank you, David. So now, we will hear from Cindy on Community Land Trust.
Good morning, Mayor. Our organization.
Okay. Our organization, the Community Land Trust of Palm Beach County and the Treasure Coast, was created by Palm Beach County back in 2006. The idea that it was going to be one of the tools in the affordable housing toolbox, really Ms. Baker was really kind of the brain behind that. But it was established as a separate 501(c)(3) organization. And really, the reason for that is that A, it could qualify for grants. And then also, the idea was that it can be a tool that can be used for the other municipalities in the county. So, the county did provide a two-year operating grant to get us started and did provide in-kind office space that lasted a bit beyond that. They've also, over the years, donated land and provided project financing and also subsidies. We are, like most land trusts, governed by a tripartite board of directors. What that means is that we have one-third organizational representatives, and that's not necessarily belonging to one organization. It's just an area of expertise, like a developer, an attorney, a Realtor, and things of that nature that really help us do our business. One-third is the general community, and the reason we have those seats is because that, wherever we develop or have our houses, we're impacting the larger community. So, we want them to be able to have a voice. And then we have one-third of our seats that are set aside for homeowners and renters. A fun fact is, before I started with the Community Land Trust back in 2006, I actually worked for Jonathan Brown's department under previous directors, Ramar Harvin and Edward Lowry. The original board of directors hired me on as the founding executive director. And the county did appoint our incorporators, but since then, it's election, they're actually appointed by our board, and our membership. Okay, so our mission, really the core mission of the Community Land Trust of Palm Beach County and the Treasure Coast is to build up a permanent supply of affordable homeownership and rental housing. We look at it as infrastructure. We want to build that housing and have it available for future generations. We also want to make sure that we are creating vibrant, mixed-income communities that are sustainable. So, from our founding until, it's actually 2021, not 2019, our service area was Palm Beach County. But back in 2021, Port St. Lucie decided that they had, they wanted to start selling any houses that they produce or any affordable housing that they fund is sold under a community land trust. And I'll go into in a second of what that means and why that's a little bit different. So, we expanded our service area, we met with them. They were really interested in us moving up there. We helped them create a program. But beyond that, our core area focus has been Palm Beach County. And we do have CLT units in a number of municipalities, including but not limited to Royal Palm Beach, Lake Worth Beach, Riviera Beach, Palm Springs, Haverhill. We're soon going to have units in Jupiter as well because their workforce housing ordinance requires that any homes produced are sold through a community land trust and are permanently affordable. So, why CLT? Bear with me here. Okay, so typically, in affordable homeownership programs, a purchase assistance mortgage is provided to the homebuyer, and a deed restriction is recorded that ensures the home stay affordability, affordable over a certain period of time, 15 years to 30 years. Many times, if the affordability of the unit is lost, the subsidy funds have to be repaid. So, if they sell the house during that time, they repay those subsidy funds. The concept is that once the subsidy's repaid, it's going to be available for the next income-restricted buyer to purchase a home. One challenge with the sustainability of this model is that if the owner stays in the unit through the restricted period, the purchase assistance mortgage is routinely forgiven. And therefore, that public investment is only benefiting that one family. Another challenge with this model is that household incomes have not historically kept up with rising housing prices. Therefore, the gap between what people can afford and the cost of housing is increasing. This means that over time, a greater amount of purchase assistance is needed to be available for future buyers. We call that the ever-increasing maltefe. See how the gap gets bigger? Unlike typical purchase assistance programs, subsidy retention programs such as a community land trust are designed to preserve home affordability over time. CLTs invest public funds into property to make a home purchase affordable for lower-income families. But when a CLT homeowner decides to sell, a cap is placed on the amount of money for which the home can be sold. The maximum sales price caps preserves the home's affordability to future homeowners, thus retaining the impact of the initial subsidy investment. And just really quick, I'm not going to get into details, but essentially, they get everything, they pay down their mortgage, but they only get a share of that market appreciation. The rest of the appreciation stays in the unit so that it's affordable to the next buyer with either no or very little subsidy needed. Okay, so far to date, we've developed 148 units of permanently affordable housing, 60-year homeownership, and 80-year multifamily. We have another 23 in process. And then we have another 10 in the immediate pipeline. And that's also, the 10 that we have in the pipeline are us partnering with the Lake Worth CRA. They've been providing more lots. And then we partner with the county to get that gap subsidy and produce those homes. These are some examples of what we've done. On the top is a unit we produced on Kirk Road. We actually did six there in partnership with Palm Beach County. They provided the gap subsidy. And Mr. Brandt did not mention it, but his organization also has a program where they provide low-cost financing for affordable housing development. So, they provided the financing on a number of our projects. The one below is Lojia Villages. We developed 55, 60% and below multifamily units. And the Lake Worth CRA donated that land, and we also got NSP funding from them and also money from the county. And then also, the last one was our first big project. I think that was Davis Landings. In that particular unit, we have permanently affordable rentals that range from 30% AMI to 120% AMI. And we did do a homeownership development right next to it. So, I think, I didn't add it to a slide, but definitely, our challenges has been the cost of housing to develop. We have served people from 30% AMI to 120 for homeownership. We typically don't do 50% because it's challenging, but we have up to 120. Our mainstay has been the 80% AMIs. Affordable homeownership is very expensive to develop. But given the market conditions, we're really only able to reach 100% and 120% AMI with the lot donated and $100,000, 90 to $100,000 in subsidy. It's just, it's difficult. The benefit is, it's permanently affordable, so.
So, just to point out, thank you, Cindy. CLTs or Community Land Trusts, they're becoming more popular in Florida because of the affordability. And I just want to just ensure that we hone in this point is that the land remains the property of the trust, okay? And the home is what is actually sold. So, these are normally left in affordable in perpetuity.
Commissioner Woodward, do you recognize?
Yes.
I just wanted to add. Okay, I just wanted to add, I wasn't going to get into the real big details of it, but how that actually works is that we lease the land to the homeowner under a renewable 99-year ground lease. And in that ground lease is the resale restriction. So, they'll know exactly whenever they're going to sell what their sale price is going to be.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward, do you recognize?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my first workshop, so I guess we get to have a discussion, open discussion here. And at the risk of this delving into a philosophical debate, what is the benefit for the person who's going to purchase permanently affordable housing versus renting?
Sure. So, the first benefit is that they actually are paying down a mortgage. So, they're building up equity over, you know, paying down their 30-year mortgage. So, eventually, that's all going to be theirs when they sell. They also get the benefit of the federal taxes so they can deduct that off their income tax versus they wouldn't be able to if they were renting. It's stability. They're knowing over 30 years their rent's not going to double in three years, which we've seen happen in Palm Beach County. You know that what your homeownership costs are going to be over the 30-year period. And then, it's really just, and they can pass it on to heirs. So, really, what our buyers have said, they can't touch anything in the open market at all. So, they're only renting. They're typically paying less in our, for our homeownership than they were paying for renting. And they're building up stability and security for their kids. Like, gosh, if anything, what happened to them, they have something to leave for their children. So, it's not, they're buying units below market, but they're not getting the market value when they sell. But they're still getting benefits of homeownership.
I can follow up?
Yes.
Yeah, as far as like building the equity, are they, they're never able to sell at market value, though, right?
They're never able to sell at market value, that is correct. So, they're always.
So, what equity are they actually building?
Well, they're building wealth by paying down a mortgage. And then also, I think, it's really interesting, we did this exercise where we looked at, you know, what are they saving by paying, for purchasing a CLT home than they are for doing the market? And we're projecting that off over the 30-year period, or 10 years, say 10 years. And what's really interesting is that what they're saving on a monthly basis tends to be very similar to the equity they would have lost when they sold. I mean, that's kind of, you know, they wouldn't be able to afford the market value anyways, but that's kind of the benefit that they're having, that they're being able to, you know, have affordable housing, save that difference, and then also, being able to pay down the mortgage and having that wealth when you decide, if you ever decide to sell.
Okay, I guess my concern, and this would be more of an open discussion, I'd like to hear what anyone else has to say, is it just seems like unless they want to stay in that home for 30 years, I don't completely understand the benefit, all of it. I mean, it's, I know that there's like debate on this, and I'd like to hear what other people have to say on this.
Let me see if I can help answer, answer some of that. So, let's say they stay in there for 10 years, and they're paying down their, well, they'll have to stay a little bit longer. Let's say they stay for 15 years, and they're paying down their mortgage. So, after about year eight, they really, you know, the principal on the mortgage starts to really reduce. So, that amount of funding, so let's say by the end of 15 years, they've now accrued, I don't know, $25,000 or $30,000 in equity now in that property. When they sell that, that equity will leave with them. That can be the down payment for the next property. So, they can go from one of these into a market, into a market-rate property where they would see all the benefits of potential benefits of appreciation from the market. In addition, they're saving on their taxes, right? Because you're allowed, I believe it's up to $10,000 now from the federal government that you can write off on your mortgage payments. You know, so they get that savings. That's, I know, it's not a perfect world, right? Because of the limitations. But it does allow somebody to get their foot in the door, if you will, if they don't have the ability to find a down, you know, the down payment that they might need to get into a market-rate house. That's how I, that's how I look at it. Is it a great bet? I mean, is it as good an investment as being in the free, in the open market? No. But they, yeah, but they're also getting a house. And I think that, as we've seen recently, the knowing of what your payments are going to be every month, right? And then if, assuming you are also moving up in your job, right? So, now, that portion of your income now is no longer having to go to rent to somebody that hopefully you're, they're doing good financial planning and they're saving that money. So, then they not only have the equity when they move out, but they've got, they've put some of that into savings as well as they've increased their income over the years as well. So, it's a foothold, it's a toe hold in if they don't stay for the 30 years. So, that's the way I look at it.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Sax, Vice Mayor, you recognize? And then we'll have Administrator Baker.
I also have concerns about it that can they at some point, because most, most people don't stay in a house for 30 years, especially if it's their first house, right? And they're just trying to make payments. It's better to own than to rent, however. They really don't, they have equity, but they won't have any profit once the house is sold. Is that correct?
They do get a share in the appreciation, which caps out at 25%. So, if the house went up.
So, they get 25% of the sale of the house. The other 75% goes back into the trust?
No, it, there's so much subsidy involved with getting someone in the house, $100,000, that we feel that what happens is that the homeowner will get the 25. Anything else stays with the house. So, that way, it sets the next sale price lower so another homeowner can benefit from it. And one other benefit I did want to say is that we set our sale prices at the affordable price regardless of what it cost to build us. So, these days, it's costing us, you know, $300,000 to build. We may set, we set at 200. They're only paying property taxes on that 200, not the 300. So, that's also allowing them to buy more house. So, it's making it, you know.
Will they be able to homestead the house?
Yes, they're homesteaded, they benefit from the federal taxes. I mean, everything's kind of like traditional homeownership except for, and they get a regular 30-year mortgage except for that piece of the equity share.
Can they buy out of the status of having an affordable house? In other words, if they come into some money, wherever it may, lottery or something. Of course, if they have the lottery, they're going to buy someplace else. But let's say, let's say, as the mayor said, they work really hard. Can they buy out of the status? In other words, can they buy up the mortgage so that when they do sell, they get 100% of the equity? I hear uh-uh from my left.
No, I mean, part of it's affordability and perpetuity. What they can do is sell the house and then buy something else. But the concept is that the community stewards' land is off the, it's off the market. So, therefore, it's a resource that's available in perpetuity. So, they would need to sell it to, if they wanted to, we won't make them leave because they won the lottery. They're welcome to, you know, do better in their careers or win the lottery or what have you. But if, but they can't ever buy out the land.
I see, okay. This is one of our tools.
Yes.
One of our tools. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, let's see, I think Administrator Baker, then we go to Commissioner Woodward, and then to Commissioner Moreno.
I think you did an excellent job on laying that out. I do want to highlight the fact that most of the buyers in this program are not your typical buyer that can just, you know, come in and do our program and receive subsidies. These individuals need a little more help in getting into the ownership process. And what we've found over the years, even with some of our other subsidized housing, is that they don't flip. They don't usually move in and flip property. That's not what these buyers do. They normally get in and they stay in. If, you know, they, for whatever reason, succumb, they're heirs. If they meet the qualifications, then we can work with them on them moving into that home. This is just a starter. But we wanted to make sure if we invest it, that that property would stay in perpetuity for affordable housing. Because what we see and what we saw when the market really got heated was individuals coming in, writing us big checks with a smile, "Here you go, we're out," and then that property. flipped from affordable housing to the market, and we lost those units. With a community land trust, this was one way to ensure that we could get people started owning, uh, units.
All right, uh, Commissioner Woodward, then Commissioner Moreno.
I'm hoping to keep it for a while. Um, I, you brought up something that I was curious about, do we have numbers on how long the average homeowner stays in a communal interest property?
Okay, we've only been around since two thousand and six. Um, they did a longer study out of the first CL, the first larger CLT, um, in Vermont, and they found that the average buyer, buyer only stays for seven years, and like eighty percent of them go on to market homeownership. I think our market's different here. We've only recently had our first resale, and now we're having our second. So, really, everyone's been there since two thousand and eight, or depending, but we've, we haven't had a lot of resales yet. But we also went through, um, you know, the down market, so we weren't even really building new homes at the time, that's why we did the, we were kind of focusing on the rental, just because there was really no new construction housing market, um, during the last mortgage meltdown.
I'd, sorry, second question, please. Um, and you mentioned that they could pass it on to their heirs, their children. Do they have to qualify for affordable housing in order to inherit?
So, um, the county now could let them speak to their declaration of restriction, because when they give us money, we have our ninety-nine-year ground lease on the property and their declaration restrictions, and I believe that their deck doesn't allow you to automatically pass it on, I'm not sure, I'll let them speak. But, um, with the, with the ninety-nine-year ground lease, we, outside of the deck, because we have to follow that during the fifteen or thirty-year period, outside of that, um, there's a designated, uh, people that can actually just absorb the house, that can stay in the house. If you've lived there for twelve months or longer, so you're, you're, you can just live and stay in the house, you don't have to qualify. Or if you're a dependent child. If you're an heir that doesn't meet those, like, say you live in Vermont and you want a summer home, um, you do have to meet the income qualifications, because that wasn't the intent of the program, we're trying to house our workforce and, you know, from all, all salaries and AMIs or what have you. So, that's kind of the caveat there, but they will, if they don't meet those requirements, they'll sell it and they'll benefit from the sale proceeds. It's not like the, it's lost, but they can't actually reside there if they don't meet the requirements. Yeah, that's, that's.
At the twenty-five percent?
Depending on the tenure, so we, we, and then I will add that we have a different resale formula with this Port St. Lucie, and they get, um, one, um, one and a half percent of appreciation every year, that's just like a flat formula, there's different ways you could do it.
Commissioner Moreno, you recognize?
Okay. I'm thinking that the benefit of homeownership here, one, is the fact that you know what your monthly payment is going to be for as long as you have it, other than your taxes going up, but you're homesteaded, so that, and insurance. But, you know, the point that you made earlier, which needs to be repeated, is that, well, if you're renting a unit, you really don't know what your rent is going to be next year, the year after that, and the year after that, especially the way the market is right now. Also, uh, their initial investment is very minimal, whereas if you're buying a market rate house and you're not going for private mortgage insurance, basically, you're, you are paying twenty percent of the sale price of the house, so that's your equity that you put in, in the first place. So, I know that in the, like, let's get Limestone Creek, um, as an area of discussion, a lot of those folks that live in Limestone Creek have been there a long, long, long time, and this is a low-income community, so, um, where there are the folks that, you know, move every seven years or whatnot, in the lower-income communities, once you've now established your home, you tend to keep it. So, I think that might, does that help a little bit? Okay. Uh, it's, it is hard to grasp, the whole program is hard to grasp, because, you know, we think that homeownership is investment, something that you can build up and then take with you and go buy someplace else and move to a nicer home, or a bearer home, or whatever, unless you're old and you want to move to a smaller home, you know? Like my parents move in with me, you know? But, um, I, I believe that the way the program works is, is just to make sure that the folks that are coming into those homes really have an idea of what their expenses are going to be, and that they can afford that, because otherwise, I don't think they're, I don't think it's doable. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Ready?
Moving on.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm enjoying the discussion, and it shows that we have a board who are all now housing experts. So, we have Westgate CRA now, and that's LSA, yeah.
We've not done yet with this presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Administrator Baker. It's a pleasure to be here, and, um, I'm happy to meet the three new commissioners. Welcome. The Westgate, uh, CRA was created in nineteen eighty-nine by, uh, the Board of County Commissioners under the Community Redevelopment Act of, uh, the Florida statutes. As, like, uh, Cindy with the CLT, we are also, uh, a grown child of the Housing and Economic Development Department. The department used to staff the CRA before the CRA had enough money to hire their own staff. The purpose of the CRA was to, uh, address drainage, sanitary sewer, improve the woodways, install streetlights, and do economic and housing development in the Westgate area. All those projects are outlined in the redevelopment plan that the BCC approved in two thousand seventeen. The CRA is funded by, um, at Valorem Tax, through tax increment financing. We receive money from the General Fund and also from the Fire Rescue Municipal Service Taxing Unit. The CRA board members are appointed by the BCC for four-year terms. The BCC must approve the CRA annual budget. The BCC also approve disposition of properties that the CRA owns, and also issuance of any revenue bonds. This, the BCC is not responsible to pay the CRA's debt, except as pledged through the tax increment financing. The CRA is located into two, uh, district, District Two, and also District Seven. It's about thirteen acres and, uh, two square miles. We are bounded by Okeechobee Boulevard, North, uh, Florida Mango on the east, Military Trail on the west, and, um, Belvedere, uh, on the south. This morning, we only talking about our housing programs, even though the CRA does more than just housing. We are involved in economic development, and we do a lot of, uh, infrastructure improvement projects, we, um, but we only talking about housing programs this morning. The CRA assembled lands, and those pieces of lands, we turn them over to developers for economic development or housing development. We, we have also done a few, uh, new homes, the CRA hire directly contractors to build a number of, uh, new units. We also have a, a preservation grant, where we provide grants to existing homeowners to improve their homes, so that we can preserve, uh, the affordable housing stock. We also have a site development assistance, we give grants to new developers when they are building a new housing in the area. Uh, I think our biggest program is the bonus density program, where we have the ability to increase, uh, the density, uh, for a developer. We're going to show some examples of that. We, we also do a lot of zoning change and land use change to, to facilitate mixed-use development, creating more housing units, where developers can build, uh, houses on a lot that was zone commercial. We also provide great application to developers, uh, great application assistance. We, um, partner with other developers and the county and several departments to do other housing, uh, projects in the area. We also do infill housing development. And those are some examples of what we've done in the last ten years. We've built, uh, thirty-one single-family housing units, as you can see, some samples at the bottom of the slides. We also work with developers to build eighty-four multifamily units for seniors. We, we partners with, uh, DHD, Neighborhood Renaissance, Everbank, Hiberia, Wells Fargo, and also the Housing Finance Authority to fund those projects. We get money from, uh, the NSP two, DRI, CDBG, and also CRA funds to build, uh, those housing units. All, all those projects on that slide are subsidized, because we get, uh, federal funds, DRI, CDBG, so all are for people who makes eighty percent or less of the median income. We also work with, uh, other developers to build unsubsidized workforce, uh, housing also. Um, we provide site development assistance to those developers. The cottage homes were also, uh, projects that we work with, with developers to create by doing zoning change to allow developers to build smaller houses on twenty-five-foot lots, where a developer can buy dilapidated, dilapidated homes under one hundred foot, they can subdivide it into four, uh, lots, and this project has been very successful in, uh, some areas of, uh, the CRA. We also provide assistance to developers who also build eight other single-family homes in the area and four duplexes. Using the, then, uh, density bonus pool, we are allowed to increase density for some developers, and those are some examples of the, uh, bonus density, uh, program. The first one is the Green Apartment under construction. It's a one hundred ninety-eight, uh, unit development. Fifty-two of those units are set aside for workforce housing. Without the bonus density program, the developer was only allowed to build, um, sixty units, but, uh, he was able to get more units from the pool, and then, uh, that's why he was able to do one hundred and ninety-eight units using density from, uh, the density pool. The Autumn Ridge, it's another project, that's, uh, hundred and six units, and, and again, that developer was going to be able to do about, uh, thirty units, but with, um, the density pool is, they are able to do one hundred and six, and we have a few other projects in the pipeline using the density, uh, bonus pool. Those two projects are not under construction, but they are in the pipeline. Uh, we, there is a forty-six unit, forty-six units of, um, workforce housing on Westgate Avenue, that's going to the zoning department for approval right now. We also have the ENM Realty that just submitted to the county, I think that's going to be thirty-eight units, most of the uni, those units are going to also be, uh, workforce. Uh, all the projects that receive, um, a unit from, uh, the density bonus pool have to set aside twenty percent of their unit for workforce, uh, housing, and, um, as, uh, they all have to follow the guidelines of the workforce, workforce housing programs that the county has. They are administered by the planning department to make sure those units stay affordable for the twenty to thirty years, depending on when those projects come into the pipeline. Like we said earlier, we do a lot of other things, but this morning we wanted to focus just on the housing programs and the things we are doing, and, uh, we thank you for the time. I think the highlights for us in terms of housing is really, uh, the ability we have to increase density and allow developers to do more on a land that they could only do eight units. With, uh, the bonus density, they can do thirty units or more, depending on the area they are located in the CRA. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. LSA, just real quick, on one of the slide, I think page fifty-three, it's, I see that the Green Apartment and also Autumn Ridge, do you see potentially in the future for more workforce and affordable housing bill built, um, in the Westgate CRA?
Yes, uh, we are reviewing a lot of, uh, projects right now for Congress Avenue. Besides those two you mentioned, we are looking at maybe another, uh, three, just on Congress Avenue. And on Westgate, we have, uh, five projects we're reviewing for mixed use that will include, uh, workforce housing units on, on those projects. I don't want to speak out of terms, but we have some major developers who are looking at larger tracts of land in the area. Maybe next two months, we'll know more, and I'm pretty sure some of the, the developers have talked to you about, uh, some potential projects for Congress Avenue and in other parts of, of the CRA. I think a lot of the developers are taking advantage of, uh, the additional density, so we're getting a lot of calls, and in the next, uh, six months, we'll be able to say more.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, is there any other questions or comments? I just want to say on behalf of our board, thank you very much, this was a, uh, very comprehensive and thorough, uh, there's a lot of material, as we know, a lot of different programs you all manage, and appreciate, uh, the opportunity for the presentation. I have a few cards here, um, but I also see the same people are signed up to speak after the next item. Do you really want to speak right now, or can we just go? Thank you. There's, there is one person that I didn't.
Andrea Flores, do you want to wait for the, do you, do you want to speak now, or wait till four B? Thank you.
All right, so, with that, we will be moving on, just to give everybody an idea what we're going to do, we're going to get started with our next presentation. I've been given a couple of potential stop points, uh, that makes sense, and, uh, we, as close to noon as possible, we will, um, break, and then we'll come back, and I, with the board's indulgence, if you, would you mind coming back at one-thirty, get us, give us a little bit of an early start to catch, try and catch back up? Anybody have an issue with that?
Sounds good.
You don't need an hour and a half?
Hour and a half, that's good.
I brought my lunch, too.
I'm eating with, uh, anybody who brought their lunch.
Okay, so, just to be clear, would you prefer an hour and a half or an hour? Okay, we have, I said earlier, I said, I said, we said two o'clock, so we'll split the difference and call it an hour and a half. One-thirty, okay. Just so people know.
It's eleven-thirty now, so are we talking about one o'clock?
No, we're, we're gonna, I, sorry, you weren't here when I was speaking. So, what I said we would do is we're going to start, start now, we have a couple of places we can break, be at as close to noon as we can, we'll break, and then we'll come back at one-thirty, if that works. Does that work for your schedule?
Does that work for our time, so we just have to, that, that work for everyone else?
What else?
All right.
Okay. All right, Mr. Rutter, you have the floor.
Mayor Commissioners, good morning. Your workshop this morning, that Kevin and planning staff will be leading on, follows a variety of, uh, board direction over the past, about a year or so, actually, you've had a number of, uh, development projects come your way, uh, been discussion about densities, and I think, you know, you could break this all down into three pieces. One, you had a item last Thursday, it was the Colony, which probably is a microcosm for a number of the points that we're looking to get your direction on today, as it relates to comp planners, relates to bonus density programs, and how to, uh, better cobble those together to make a more streamlined program. The second part would be density, had a number of projects that have crossed our desk, and we continue to get prompts on ability to do densities that, you know, that exceed what our comprehensive plan allows, looking for your direction today on those points to begin that discussion. Last but not least, is workforce housing program, potential changes, again, to initiate the discussion with you, take your direction on where to proceed, it's been a topic that has been. It's been a topic that has been bounced around for about over a year now, have approached the board, but we're here now to take that direction to start that. So I will stop at that point. And Kevin and planning staff are going to lead off and run you through it.
Thank you, Patrick. So just briefly to go through an agenda, kind of to outline the conversation today. So, I guess stepping back for one second, you see our planning division staff here at hearing after hearing, and it's for site-specific amendments, there's some county-initiated amendments. So today, we wanted to spend some time to do a more holistic overview and how all this works together and what it all means. So we're going to do a pretty deep dive into growth management in Palm Beach County, which is pretty unique compared to some other areas. Population growth and trends that we've seen and what we expect to continue to occur in this county. Our current practices and programs, our density bonus programs, so we'll have a pretty deep discussion of our transfer of development rights program and our workforce housing density bonus programs, as well as some initial policy updates that staff has identified, and some implementation updates. And our last slide will conclude with, we know there are a lot of next steps. There have to be conversations with industry, interested parties, but this is to get that initial temperature from the board and direction on some items for us to move forward with. All right. So growth management overview. So every local government in the state of Florida is required to have a comprehensive plan. The counties, while there are certain components of a comprehensive plan that touch countywide, generally speaking, when we're talking about future land use amendments, it's for the unincorporated portion of Palm Beach County. Each of the thirty-nine municipalities have their own comprehensive plan. One unique aspect of planning in Palm Beach County is our I-Park process, which, forgetting what the acronym stands for, Intergovernmental Plan Amendment Review Committee. So that means anytime we have a future land use amendment that is coming before the board for a vote, that has been distributed through the I-Park process. All the municipalities are aware and vice versa. So we receive proposed amendments in the municipalities. With regard to comprehensive plans, Florida Statute, Chapter 163, lays out the requirements of a comprehensive plan. Ours happens to have fifteen elements, nine of which are required, and then we have an additional six optional elements, and probably a seventh optional element that you'll be seeing later this year. The statutes prescribe the procedures for amending the comprehensive plan, so we'll be here tomorrow for the comprehensive plan hearing, and there'll be some items for transmittal, anything that's a large-scale amendment, which is in the urban-suburban tier, exceeding ten acres, has two hearings. So the first step is that transmittal, that gets transmitted to the state of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. They then distribute it to different stakeholders and agencies like FDOT, environmental review agencies, and then we get back any comments that they may have. Then those amendments come back to you a second time for final adoption. In addition to that process for amendments, statute does require that at a minimum of every seven years, there be the evaluation and appraisal process, and that's intended for kind of a deeper dive into the comprehensive plan and for staff to identify any shortfalls we may see or any updates to the comprehensive plan that are needed, and then we're required to notify the state through that year process. I will say, with growth management changes about a decade ago, it's not as rigorous as it used to be. It used to be very, very in-depth, detailed process. That has been lax somewhat, but it doesn't, doesn't forbid staff from taking those deeper dives, it's just less requirement at the statewide level. And, all right. So I mentioned, in a sense, Palm Beach County, it's kind of unique in that we have what we call a managed growth tier system. So the county is broken up into our urban-suburban tier, we have rural tier, exurban tier, agricultural reserve tier, and the glades tier. And the system is designed to have about ninety percent roughly is the goal of the urban development of Palm Beach County within the urban-suburban tier. The other tiers typically have lower densities, especially the rural and exurban tiers, recognizing that there are a variety of lifestyle choices and to have different opportunities based on people's preference. Some of the main goals of the tier system are to ensure sufficient land facilities and services are available, to preserve, protect, and improve the quality of natural resources, environmentally sensitive lands. I mentioned the glades tier. We have many acres in our EAA or Everglades agricultural area, where obviously you are not seeing future land use amendments for development there, because that's a protected area, as well as to enhance existing communities and maintain livability, character, mobility, and identity. Talked about infrastructure and ensuring that areas where we're seeing higher intensity and density of development is adequately serviced by the needed infrastructure. And this is just an overview map showing the tier system, and each of the next slides will highlight the areas, so you'll be able to see them more clearly. But generally, the easternmost, say, fifth of the county in that light brown color is the urban suburban tier. So specific to the tier, so first one I'll cover is the urban suburban tier. And this tier is expected, like I mentioned, to accommodate the bulk of the population and employment needs for the county, roughly ninety percent. Within the urban suburban tier, there are still a range of densities and intensities. We still have areas that we have identified as rural enclaves within the urban suburban tier. And then you've seen recently, the board approved, and it was actually highlighted in the previous presentation, it's called Fountain MUPD, but it was a brownfield site on the south side of Okeechobee at a density of about twenty-five units to the acre. And I will say, outside of our URA, which we have some slides on that later, that's about the max density you can achieve with the available future land use designations we have and our density bonus programs. I think twenty-nine might be roughly the max you could get, again, outside of the URA. So next, we have the rural and exurban tiers. So these are the areas of the county, if you think of Jupiter Farms, the acreage. These areas have significantly lower allowable residential densities, primarily one dwelling unit per five acres to one dwelling unit per twenty acre, except in special planning areas such as the western communities overlay. So there is a process in the comprehensive plan for when special planning has been, you know, undertaken or in areas planned accordingly, you can get densities higher than that, but again, that involves an overlay process. The agricultural reserve, I know you all are very aware of this tier of the county, and not going to spend too much time right now on this, we do have a workshop in March that will be a deeper dive on the agricultural reserve. But generally speaking, as you all are aware, that came out of master planning efforts decades ago with the intent of allowing for some development, but in a clustered fashion to have a preservation of agricultural and open spaces within that tier. And the glades tier is much of the central and western portions of the county. I will note that the areas by Lake Okeechobee where Pahokee, South Bay, and Belglade, and some immediate surrounding areas, are actually also part of the urban suburban tier. So in those areas, the same allowable future land use designations that you can have in the urban suburban tier are allowed in that limited area of the glades tier. So when you think about the comprehensive plan, a lot of what we focus on when we're before the board for future land use amendments, deal with the future land use element. But again, there are fifteen different elements in the plan, from transportation to housing to intergovernmental coordination, conservation. Because we are a coastal county, one of the required elements is a coastal management element.
That's where we-
So yeah, so the comprehensive plan provides strategies for a whole broad of topics, broad topic range, not just site-specific future land use amendments. So briefly, I know it's a little hard to see, and I'll be zooming in on the next slide, but this lays out the different future land use categories that we have allowable in the unincorporated area of Palm Beach County. As you can see, there are various residential densities going from the rural residential densities or future land use categories that are allowed in the exurban and rural tiers. Again, we're talking about one unit per twenty acres, per ten acres, per five acres. In the urban suburban tier, you have from low residential one or one unit per acre up to HR twelve. And again, that's not including the density bonus programs with TDR and workforce housing that allow for densities in excess of that. So here, and a lot of what we'll be discussing today is focused on the urban suburban tier. So again, I just wanted to highlight those residential future land use categories that are allowed within the tier, but I've already covered those. Mayor, this was the first of two slides, I thought I could keep going, or?
Yeah, we have another-
Sure.
Why don't we keep going? Twenty.
All right. So just looking back a little bit, and I apologize, in the printout, somehow I had acres, so this morning I was like, that's not acres, so I updated it. So it's square miles on the screen. But the incorporated areas or the thirty-nine municipalities are nearly three-hundred-and-thirty-seven square miles of Palm Beach County. The unincorporated area, this is land, is more than, almost sixteen-hundred-and-forty square miles. Now again, a lot of that is encompassed within the Everglades agricultural area, but just to see the scale of the size that we're talking about. And you can see, looking back from two thousand through twenty-ten through twenty-twenty, the progression of population growth and people moving here has been pretty consistent, and based on looking at projections through twenty-thirty, they're forecasting about as much of a population increase this decade as we saw last decade. And honestly, with recent trends and some of the headlines you've seen in the papers, I wouldn't be personally surprised if that even ticked up a little bit further.
Excuse me.
Oh, yes.
Let's see. Commissioner Baxter and then Vice Mayor Sacks.
Thank you, Mayor. I want you to go back, if you don't mind, to the map of the exurban tier and the densities that are allowed on exurban tier.
Yes, so in the exurban tier, the allowable residential densities are RR twenty, which is one unit per twenty acres, RR ten, RR five, and RR two-point-five.
I find this, I came across this misleading because it's per acre, correct, with the units that you're referencing?
Right. So that the RR two-point-five would be one unit per two-point-five acre.
And I was surprised to find out that builders can cram them all together in a very close proximity and still apply by our current rules of per acre. So where, I guess, where's the breakdown, if we're learning how this all works? So where's that breakdown of, how are they able to just say, all right, we have a total mass of, let's say, fifty acres, and then they can have one unit per acre, let's use for an example? How are they, or what policy allows them to put it all together and then leave a huge mass of open space or something for somewhere else? And this particularly applying to the acreage in Locksahatchie areas that does not meet or look like the rest of what currently exists there.
I'll take that. Commissioner Bryant, this is the planning division. One of the things that we have to deal with, and we've taken out of sort of the overview, is there is a fundamental planning principle out there that is called, you know, clustering effectively. And what that allows is at very low densities, you compact the development area for more efficient service provision. It means that it's a little bit easier to maintain, you don't have to run as many, you know, pipes in the ground, as much pavement and so forth. And so the way that it works is you get a given parcel of land of X size, and you take the gross density off that, however, it then gets clustered onto that site. Our rules have allowed that for, I think, since as far back as nineteen-seventy-two, when we, actually, probably sixty-nine, we actually had the zoning code that first enabled PUDs. And so it has been enshrined in county rules and regulations for more than fifty years. And so what we have to do is, we have other requirements in statute that say you have to prevent or preclude or eliminate urban sprawl, and very low densities have been designated that. So clustering is the other way around the urban sprawl issue. It also enables you to put all your various infrastructure needs very close or closer to where they're needed. So things like schools, fire stations. And so it's part of the overall, how you go about setting up the most efficient uses in the most efficient way at the most cost-effective means. That's fundamentally what planning gets to, is that very big picture, how do you provide all the services that as a local government you need to do? So clustering is, and open space, open space has other uses, thank you. That's one of the fundamental concepts, is if you don't have the development everywhere spread out, you then have the opportunity to do something else. Where, why we have things like conservation, I'll get to it a little bit later with TDRs, is that's how we also get conservation lands, is we've taken the entitlement off of those and put them somewhere else.
May I, Mayor?
Yes, please.
I would just like to point out that anyone, even looking at a map, doesn't need to be a land planner to see the clustering doesn't fit the area of the acreage or Locksahatchie. It really, I mean, outside of a very new municipality there, houses are one house per acre, and the clustering is basically causing these problems of developments that are not fitting. The overall feel, you're basically saying, you can have open space, but it can't be your open space. That doesn't work for everyone. I think HOAs are a great thing. I think non-HOAs are a great thing. I think the more choices people have lead to a better opportunity of where you might want to live. But I'm, I guess the reason I'm asking is I just want to know, in the exurban tier, it specifically, I guess, allows for clustering of developments?
One point I'll also add, so, like I mentioned, if, so if you're not within a particular overlay, actually, let me go back to this slide with the categories. Okay, so those rural residential flu designations that we're talking about, there isn't, there wouldn't be a preclusion of if a private developer, you know, has a twenty-acre site and they want to develop it consistent with the allowable densities, but offer a larger lot, that type of development could be provided. So it's, it's not requiring that every single development out there, you know, be clustered with, you know, smaller lot lines. We have a couple proposals that are talking about having lot sizes in parts of the project that are a couple acres in size. We don't see too many of those, but that's not, it's not precluded.
And, so they're allowed to do that, is what you're saying? They can build one house per acre or whatever they are allowed via entitlements. And so with allowing that, then you're saying that it is more cost-effective for them to cluster this all together? And that is why they're doing it?
As a, both a local government and from a developer's perspective, it's that way. That's generally the concept of why you tend to look at that. There's also other costs associated with, it's either development or it could be something else. By not having the development there, you then open up for other opportunities, whether it be for agriculture, for regional water management, for, you know, other recreation and spaces. So that's the fundamental concept. Even in our urban suburban areas, you cluster development to enable things like civic pods, which is where we get our fire stations or school sites. So you, by enabling it, you get other things that you need to have development in an area. That's the fundament, I mean, it's, and it goes back to why I think a lot of us studied planning, was that was the concept of how do you look at providing all of those things? We are coming at it from the perspective of, there is development that is going to happen for, you know, that's the policy, but there are these other needs as a government that we have to provide. And that's what, effectively, you're looking at is through the medium of the entitlement process of getting the things that the government needs in exchange for granting the right to make the development.
So if we don't allow them to cluster together, we don't get firehouses, is what you're saying?
It puts the county in a role of, they have to go out and find the land on the open market and then purchase it, acquire- market and then purchase it, acquire it, and it's just a more cumbersome process. Through a development approval, you can say, you're getting this in exchange, the government is getting the approval of this location that will be timed as this, and then we will figure out the need that we use. That's how our planned unit developments typically work, so.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other lights. We can continue.
Actually, it's fitting I came back to this slide because one thing I also did want to point out, when we're talking about densities, these are again for the unincorporated area of Palm Beach County. So each of the 39 cities have their own comprehensive plan. So I was looking at just some of the developments in downtown West Palm Beach, and I used to live in The Strand, which is just a few blocks south of here at Avirnia and Olive. And I was looking at the units and acreage, so that, just to give an example of densities that we see in our more urban core within the municipalities, that has 282 units on a 1.2-acre site, which is a density of 235 dwelling units per acre. We're not going to be talking about those types of numbers for the unincorporated area. Obviously, this area has more of the infrastructure and transit, but I just wanted to throw out an example of some of the development that you're seeing in downtown West Palm and in that like 100, 200 dwelling unit per acre range. Okay, so like I mentioned, there's no anticipation that at least anytime soon, we're going to see our population come to a, our population growth come to a stop. We also looked back at recent, this is new residential units, so residential building permit data, and there's a little bit of a lag because it involves also data from the municipality. So we had the first three quarters of 2022, and the trend is pretty consistent that we're staying at these high numbers. So back in 2017, we're down around 4,700 new residential units being permitted that year to over 8,400 in 2021. So you're talking about almost a doubling of the number of new residential units would be seen come online countywide again. So this is just a snapshot from the planning division's website. It shows all the active amendments. I kind of zoomed in here just to show that while the urban suburban tier is intended to capture most of the development, we are seeing development pressures in other portions of Palm Beach County. You can see a lot of those red markings are in the agricultural reserve where we've had a lot of future land use amendment requests. And this is a good tool that the public can see at any given time where in the county there are proposed future land use amendments. This map here and then the next.
Excuse me, one second. Commissioner Woodward has a question.
Sure. Sorry, quick question. You said this is on our website, this map, the previous screen, sorry.
Yes, so this is all of the active future land use amendment requests that we currently have, and this is linked through the planning division website of the county's site.
Okay, thank you, I missed that part, thank you.
Sure. I know this is a little hard to see, and the next slide I'll have two kind of zoomed in versions, but this is showing the remaining vacant parcels of five-plus acres. And what's telling about this and part of the conversation we'll have later in this workshop is a lot of the policies in the comprehensive plan were geared towards when the county had vast areas of open space, greenfield development as we would call it. There's not that much of that left anymore. So a lot of the amendment requests and, you know, not every project has to come for a future land use amendment. Some go straight to zoning, but we're seeing a lot more of that infill-type development, redevelopment on smaller parcels. Typically, that means that there are more neighbors, so you have an influx of concerns. And one of the things we'll also be talking about later is the need to address compatibility. That becomes more critical when you're putting development in areas that already have existing development.
Excuse me, you have another question? This is from Vice Mayor Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Compatibility, that's a hot word. The previous slide, you had all these circles with relation to what we have to review before we approve an area. And I get a lot of pushback from folks with regard to some of these, but we'll go into that after lunch. My question is, this is compatibility. Is that in our ordinances? Is that something that is legally set or is that something that we like to talk about but not have to actually deal with when we come, when we talk about a new development?
Compatibility is absolutely in our wheelhouse, is both in planning and in zoning. You have to look at land use compatibility, you have to look at zoning compatibility. What we are recognizing, as you've seen in a lot of the zoning hearings and even some of the planning hearings, you're hearing pushback about compatibility issues.
Sure.
We do not have a great, up-to-date planning tool to address compatibility. That's one of the things we think we need to look at as we're talking about increasing densification in the right areas, is we also need to look at the transition to those uses. So that's one of the things we want to bring back to you, and if you would like, consider that a tease for what we will, I believe, come back to after lunch and talk a little bit more about.
I would like that, yes, because, you know, in the growth management comprehensive plan, we talk about, you know, the utilities, the transportation, EMS, dah dah dah. Those are all part of our plan. That's in statute or in ordinance. Compatibility, my question was, is that just something that we can talk about or is that something that is required in our plan?
Both.
Okay, so it is required.
It's a requirement is set forth in the statute that you have to have compatibility with land uses. It also is something that you have in zoning code as you must have compatibility at that point. That is one of your zoning criteria that you must consider and find that you have compatibility between the current and proposed use or.
Let's discuss this a little bit deeper dive after lunch, and if I could have that Florida statute so I could review it.
It's on the slide.
Pardon me?
It's on the slide. We will have it there for you.
Excellent. It's on slide, is it part of our packet here? Okay, excellent, thank you, sir.
All right.
Okay, so that first slide was showing all vacant parcels in excess of five acres excluding agricultural uses. These next slides are specific to lands that could be developed residentially. And again, it's the same theme there, there are just not that many parcels of significant size available for development at this point. All right, so this is now, this would be the point in the presentation where I'm going to shift over to Stephanie. I know it is after.
No, we're gonna, so we're gonna, if we're going to, you're at current practices, we'll go ahead and take a break here.
Okay. All right, so this meeting is in recess until 1:30.
Excellent, thank you.